It's like I can't figure it out. Do well.
Good evening, welcome to the city council meeting of August 22nd. Call us the order. Now, Barkley, you read the roll call for me.
Mr. Shilin?
Yes.
Ms. Gray? Mr. Moore?
Present.
Ms. Ricklew?
Present.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Present.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
And Mr. West?
Yo.
All right, we have eight council members present.
Very good, you rise with me. National Bruce Williamson is with us this evening and he's gonna leave us in our invitation. Thank you, thank you.
Bruce, sir. Our heavenly Father, since we met last two weeks past, there's been a lot of needs for prayer in and through our community and our nation. We laid to rest Officer Michaels from Clinton. We've had real issues and real problems in Charlottesville. We've buried a Marine, Sergeant Talon. These issues all are bigger than we are and more important than anything that we think is important. So we pause tonight again to reflect and remember these families, the comrades of Sergeant Talon, the fellow officers of Officer Michael and the community that he served, and the larger nation tonight who grieves again of ten sailors missing on the USS McCain. I pray, Lord, that the outcome will be according to your will. I pray, Lord, for that ship and the US military who maintains the vigil, Lord, tonight collectively, to defend the Constitution and keep this nation both safe and free, and the cost is high. For the officer who gave his life and way too often, this happens in America, where police officers are attacked, harmed, or killed. I pray in your name, Lord, that this kind of violence ceases, that we can be productive people who work together to help achieve a greater good. Thank you for the community that we live in, where we work hand in hand every day. We're not perfect, but we know you are and we follow you and we seek to live for you. In that light, Lord, we lift up this session tonight, our mayor and council persons and all those who administer and lead this city and departments, which certainly will include our first responders, our police officers and firefighters, and all of those who come to us in time of accident, trouble, or need. I pray as far as the city family perpetually for those that need your daily care. I lift up Gabriel, Mr. Moore, Mrs. Ricklew, Mr. Shilin, Mayor Benton, Chief Myers, and all others in the city family who need your daily touch. Lord bless this session tonight and lead it, and may the discussions and decisions that are made be pleasing to you. We pray this in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you again, Pastor. At the beginning of every council meeting, we set aside a time for those who are not on the agenda to, and would like to share some comments with the council to do that. And at this time, I would call anyone present who would like to visit with the council over an issue to come forward. The council will not respond at this time, but may do so later in the meeting. So therefore, if anyone present who'd like to come and address the council. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on with the agenda then, thank you. Our next item is the approval of the consent agenda. Those items on the consent agenda that are scheduled as of now are the approval of the council minutes of July 25th and of August the 8th, and the acceptance of the Director of Administration report for July. Also, the acknowledgement of the following board and commission reports, Historic Preservation, Public Utility Board, and Human Rights Commission. So at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone who would like to take one of those items off the agenda, or otherwise I'd entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda, which all those items would be approved of.
Motion for approval.
Mayor, I'd like to request the Director of Administration's report be removed from the consent agenda, two questions.
Very good, thank you. Director of Administration report has been removed, we will treat that next. Anything else anyone would like to have taken off?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't think I need it taken off, but I would point out on human rights about the Jane Beedham and the Fike humanitarian award that thanks to your help that we have partnered with the county. I just let people be aware of that, they can read that in a minute.
Okay, very good, thank you. Yeah, I think that's a positive move. Anytime that we can do something in conjunction with county, it's a good thing, I believe. So I think I had a motion for approval?
Second.
And I have a second. Very good, thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Okay, thank you. Consent agenda stands approved. Well now, consider the Director of Administration report for July. Again, I understand, Mr. Stone, you had some questions?
I had two questions on the report from the Director of Utilities. Part of your report talked about three areas that had to be repaired for wiring that's underground but not in conduit, and I was just wondering how big of a risk do we have of additional problems in that type of area?
If you go back in history and the underground wire started first being put in the ground, it's primary wire, not service wire. How we do it now is we put it in conduit, and then the primary wire is dielectrically covered, then the neutral wire's on it, and then it is covered also. We do have some old wire in town that the neutral wire does not have the coating, and those have been found with time, and in one weekend we had three spots. We've been changing it out over time. One nursing home we did a couple of years ago, we probably got a half a dozen spots left to work out. The area Mr. Shilin lives in is one of the three that went out, and that's what it is. I think he was home, probably saw them dig it up.
Oh yeah, we're not talking man.
So that's one of the spots. We do have a new bore machine that the council was good enough to buy this year, a small bore machine that we can use for some of that also. So it's the older neighborhoods that was built in the late 60s, early 70s, and we've identified three, and we've got locates started on those to take care of it. Mr. Johnson's neighborhood was another one that went out. So we're whittling down, we're getting down to a few of them. There'll still be a bunch of wire that's not in conduit, but it's jacketed, so that seems to be holding up very well. So that's the story on that.
Is there enough of a concern to go after any of these proactively, or just deal with them as we have?
We're just dealing with them as we come to them. There's a couple of spots that we've never had to splice it yet, and there's some that's got one splice.
Mine has to do with soil conditions. Some soils more acidic than others.
That's true.
So we're working through them, and as I said, we did do the nursing home, you know, that was a critical area, so we got that out. So I think now most of it's subdivisions and things of that nature, short runs.
Your report also discussed the smart grid, can you just give us a?
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Anything else?
Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hudson, we show four homes for permits. These are single-family households, sir.
Yes, well, one of them is an eight-plex out on the north end of town.
Okay.
And the others are all single-family dwellings.
Great. That's a change in what we've seen for the last several years.
Yeah, it's unusual. It's great.
Well, Hudson, hope it's a trend.
You bet.
And could we start seeing the health inspector reports again?
Sure. If you want to see it.
What's that everybody else think?
Yeah, at times I would like to.
That's kind of an important thing to see, I think, so.
Have you told me it was always in the newspaper? You don't do that anymore?
It's in the newspaper, but we'll certainly get it if you want it.
Les, I noticed they got that house down on Wood Street.
Yes, sir. And we're taking one down tomorrow down on Locust Street.
Okay.
Is it coming down tomorrow?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, good bet.
Been a long process.
It is a long process, and they always will be. It's not gonna get to be a shorter process, you can't do it.
Sure.
It's too many laws and law, too many things you've gotta do, too many hoops to jump.
Les, I'd like to commend young lady G. up working for you. She's done an excellent job out there.
Good, thank you, appreciate it.
She's got a great personality, and she loves her job. She loves her job.
She has one of the toughest jobs in the city, because she makes everybody mad.
She can climb trees, I watched her.
She does a nice job, and I will pass it along.
You bet, thank you. And I'd like to ask Chief Colfell a question, too.
Nice ring, too, isn't it?
You mentioned three fires, and one of them we had a fatality?
Yes, we did have a fatality in one.
Okay.
We arrived on scene, had a heavy, heavy fire coming out of the structure. We had to hit the fire from the outside first, then made our way in, and we located one victim inside. We were able to get him out through a window, but was not able to revive him.
Okay, well, I'm sorry to hear that, I'm sure that's an emotional situation for the guys.
Guys did a really good job.
Yeah. Do we have, it says it's under investigation, we have any more updates on?
We're still waiting on autopsy reports, toxicology. It takes several weeks, so we haven't had an official report yet.
So we have a fire marshal investigating this, state fire marshal investigate that, or?
Normally, any fatality fires or major fires are called the state fire marshal in to investigate with our investigators, along with Fulton Police Department as well.
All right. Okay. I mean, it's been a long time since, I can't remember the last time we've had a fatality and a fire, so.
Well, we actually had one about a year and a half, two years ago as well.
Okay, maybe it just wasn't pointed out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sad.
Thanks for your guys for doing what they do, it's, well, it helped the community.
Thank you, G.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything for the Director of Administration report? If not, I'd entertain a motion of approval or acceptance.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Thank you, have a motion and a second to accept the Director's Administration report, please signify, if you're in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Thank you. The Director of Administration report is accepted. Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to presentation, financial report for July. Mrs. Holtzloggs with us.
Kathy.
And she'll give us her wisdom, thank you.
First thing I'll tell you is our sales tax was up 1.65 percent, which is, I believe, good, because we're not falling back as much as we typically do. And I think I noted in the general fund that we realized $26,000 on that oil, oiler truck that the council approved that we could sell, so that was a plus. It was fully depreciated, so we reported the entire amount as a gain. The airport bought a load of fuel, the amount of $26,000 this month, and I filed for a $204,000 reimbursement for the wastewater treatment plan improvements. Other than that, it was pretty much business as usual.
Is there a lifetime on this airport fuel? Is it good for just so many months indefinitely, or what?
We probably buy two loads a year.
Okay.
So it all goes in the same bank, and it all gets mixed, and?
There's not an expiration date.
That's what I wondered, that's a lot of money, and I was just wondering.
It looks like sales are up, too, from what it says here, right? If I read that right, I've lost it.
Oh yeah.
Revenue almost double.
Oh, and fuel sales at the airport?
Yes.
And electric funds increased by $200,000, I think, in July. That's it?
Any other questions for Mrs. Holtzloggs? We'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
Second. Thank you, have a motion and a second for approval of the operating statements for the month of July. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Financial report stands approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we've entertained unfinished business and smart grid update, who's gonna do that one? You want, Ms. Kathy to do it?
Yeah, she's got your chair.
Short straw. Roller skates.
I will tell you that as far as the billing process goes, we actually have, I think, six routes that we have deployed, electric, gas, and water. So we are using those six routes in the test database to try and import the meter reads from Tanalis. We have been successful in that endeavor, and so we're in the process of doing some parallel billing for those routes compared to what our meter readers read. That's where we're at.
There was a note in there about some data mismatch, they dropped the first.
Oh, that's on the gas meters, and that, yes, that is a Tanalis issue. They are working on it. To date, I have not heard from their programmers to tell me they've remedied the problems. I believe it was one of those situations where a couple of months ago, we had an issue with some of the gas meters were reporting an extra leading digit, so they wrote a patch to fix that. Well, it fixed more than that, because now we have other gas meters that aren't picking up the first digit, so.
Is that affecting our billing, since our billing does?
I can, they're only the large commercial meters. So I know which ones they are.
Okay.
So there's a limited number of them. I think Darryl and I talked about it, and I believe there's maybe 150 of those meters citywide, but out of just six routes, we're not talking a large number.
I was thinking the gas was everywhere, didn't you?
No.
Okay.
Just the large meters.
Okay.
And we haven't deployed all the gas meters.
So what about the water misreads? Has that been taken care of, or is that commercial as well?
I would say offhand, we probably, water is the toughest one to pull, just by the nature of the beast, they're in a pit in the ground, and, you know, so we, there's probably not as high, I would hesitate to give you a number on what the percentage is of water reads that we get, pulling them from Tanalis. I believe it would be the same regardless of the source of the electronic read, but it's not critical. It's not to the point where we have to have so many re-reads that it's not worth.
Well, it just said here, a high number of water misreads, and I just wondered exactly what does that mean?
Well, misreads means that they, they pulling the wrong read. Where are you reading that, I'm sorry? She's referencing the Utility Board and the consent agenda. Yeah, we're gonna have more water than anything else. So that's pretty much where we're at. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. No, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Kathy? Thank you for that update.
Thank you, Kathy.
Very good. Well now, move on to new business, and it looks like we're gonna do Autumn on the Bricks.
Yeah.
So that's pretty cool, counting up pretty quick here.
Yeah.
Mr. Gary, we're pleased to have you with us.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Bill, Council.
I'm, I came here on behalf of, the Art House is the one who receives all the funding for this, is our fourth annual Autumn on the Bricks, but I'm also representing the Brick District. And for those of you who don't know, you know, the Brick District basically is, it helped build the Art House, which has now been a very well success, as well as, I would say that I think a lot of things in the Brick District have, over the years, the years I've been around, since 93 in the Brick District, seen very much positive things going on in the last few years, really pushing forward, and that's due to thanks to the city and all they do, and all the people that we have that are getting involved. So basically, I'm here, I think in the packet, someone had sent, and I wasn't the one who wrote this in the packet, but someone sent, and it's the needs or wants, I have it right here, I don't have a piece, I can't print right now, I have to do this, but in the packet, you'll see, you will see some of the wants and needs, and I've seen like a scoop of sand and such, and that's for the children's area. It's gonna be October the 14th. The things that's not written on there that I need to let show, and I did talk to, I haven't talked to the fire chief, that we will be closing off some of the streets, or, and I can get with that with you, but exactly where it'll be, but we do know and will abide by all the rules we always have before by keeping one lane open during the Court Street area, so we can have room for emergency vehicles and that such to get to Court Street. We're not closing that much of it off, I know, I know up close to the theater and then down to the Fifth Street area, and also incorporates the farmer's market that day as well. The other thing that's not written on here is we were asked for alcohol to be sold out there, we'll be selling alcohol. There'll be, we ourselves are selling some of it, that'll be benefits to the Art House, we'll get all the permits, all the licenses needed to get that done, on part of that, and on the other thing that's on there is we'll have distilleries. You know how we do the Morel's and Microbrew? There are a number of, I call them craft distilleries throughout the state, and we're kinda doing something different, and they're gonna come and share some of their spirits, I should say. I use the word carefully, moonshine, all those things, because Chief's not here, and I did talk to the Chief of Police, who's very much in favor of this, I did, was on the phone with him, so he is aware of the alcohol and where we're gonna be and when we're shutting it down and such. I'm just asking for permission to do this fourth annual Autumn on the Bricks. I think it's a big thing, number one, Southern Living just came out, we, I think, I don't know if anybody's seen that on the council, that we got, what, top 10?
Yeah.
Of the best small towns to visit, and you know, I don't know, that's pretty awesome in my mind, and on that, they have a blog that says Autumn on the Bricks, and they're talking about that, so that's our upcoming festival, and I don't know how much the readers kinda come into this, but I think it's a big thing that we need to go forth, and I think it's gonna get better every year, we have a really good group. Jerry Bell is the one who chairs this, the whole board and the committee on this, and so I feel very confident that this is gonna be our best year ever. So I'm asking permission to see, you see the needs and wants, and if I have any questions, I'd love to ask, answer now, if I have the answer.
I have one question.
Sure.
Does the city need a copy? It says an insurance will be provided to the city.
Normally, you do.
Do you need that?
Yeah, we usually get that.
Yes. Normally, you do.
Do you automatically do that?
Yes, we've did several, I think Morel's and Microbrew, and any of the other things that we'll have, we definitely get, you know, they get the liability insurances, and make sure that anybody here who are selling, there might be some of the people who may be coming into the distillery and selling, they will also have to show proof of insurance and liability as well, so we'll make sure that that's all with the city.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
One scoop of sand, what, size scoop, and what for?
You know, that might be a question I regulate to further down, but I would, I did not write this, and I, as I was proofreading prior to me getting here, I was like, ooh, you know, there were several things that I didn't know. A scoop of sand, and I'm not saying it won't be a small scoop.
I think is it this scoop or is it this scoop?
And I'm just gonna relative thing, maybe like a bobcat size, you know, like a, and I don't know how many that would be, a couple cubic feet, you know, cubic yards, I don't know what that ends up being, and I apologize for not having the answer for you in front of you, but I don't, I think it's just enough for the kids to play on, and it's not gonna be a huge, it won't be the big, you know, what they have at the quarries type scoop, because we'll be a mess picking that up, we have to get this cleaned up, so yeah, I think if I assume, you know, like a bobcat has that one size, and I apologize for not knowing what that size would be, but that's, I'm assuming that's what all we're asking for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Gary?
Yes, Steve.
What is your definition of police protection?
I need police protection the whole day, I don't know. You know what, I don't think that, and I've seen that worded as well, and that's not the worded, and I think I would have probably chose at the point, actually, and if I were to ask it, sometimes we have police presence, and when I mean presence, I just mean it's nice to have some of the officers down there, just in case. And it shows, it shows a lot that they're involved in number two, one, because I don't think there's gonna foresee any problems, but you never know, there may be one person that's not tolerable to what we're wanting and can be removed from the scene.
I like your word better, I was just wondering.
I, yeah.
Your word.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It says the proceeds go to the Art House, is that a non-for-profit?
It is a non-for-profit, and it has been set up that way all along. We knew from the beginning, and when we did that, there was actually a number of us, there's five or six, I don't know, that we put our money into it and built it, and then once it reaches that point, it's paid for itself, we didn't have any truly amount of money going in, we just made sure that we have credit, so we, we knew that privately we weren't gonna have anybody wanna do it, so we had to kind of group together, and we did it, and it's been a success, so we're overseeing, it still makes, it's making money, it's even got enough money to pay, you know, a small-time director, a small, we're still looking for that particular person over time. So it is a non-for-profit, and I don't know what 501(c)(3) it falls under, I think we're probably under a parent right now, I don't think we have our own yet. I think, I'm sure Tom Riley can answer that question where we're sitting, but we are, I know we are a non-for-profit.
Okay, I thought we were past that time, but okay, that's fine.
Yep.
I guess I could go on forever, I just didn't know. All right, that's all I had, sir.
Yes, you have a couple of these.
So Mary's the only one that stumped him, he said he knew them all.
I didn't stump him, I just.
How big a scoop?
I just want my police protection, that's all.
We'll give you that.
I move for approval of the Autumn on the Bricks on October 14th.
And I will second it.
Very good, I have a motion and a second to approve the Autumn on the Bricks event for October the 14th. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good.
Thank you very much, Council, Mayor, Bill.
Thank you.
Good to see you on this time.
Yeah, nice to see you.
Very good. Well now, move on to discussion of the 2018 budget. Seems like it's awful early in the year, but we're going there.
Well, that's what I'm, you stole my speech. Rob has been working on it a lot, and we've been reviewing it, and we're just not ready to say, provide or show you anything yet. You know, the next council meeting will be the fourth week in September, we don't have a first meeting in September because of the MML, so it's gonna be literally a month until we get together again, by that time, we will have a document. With Rob leaving, Kathy and I will be finishing it up and doing what we can, and getting some numbers together, providing with him, document. All righty?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson on that? Okay, very good. It's now that time for you as council members to bring any item forward, excuse me, that you'd like to discuss that is not already included on the agenda, and let me start this, well, excuse me, Mr. Shilin, you want?
Pass.
Thank you. Mr. West?
Nothing for me today.
Ms. Ricklew?
Nope, nothing today.
Thank you.
Mr. Stone?
Just two thank yous. The procession for Talon Leach was absolutely amazing. The turnout at this community, including the City of Fulton departments, was nothing but outstanding. Thanks to everybody who had anything to do with that, whether you were doing it on city time or private time, it was perfect. And then I wanted to thank Rob, I believe this is our last city council meeting, where you're officially with us, sit over there next time.
I bet he won't.
But thank you for your service.
Yep.
Here, here. Very good. Thank you, anybody else? Okay, let me move on down, Ms. Gray.
Yeah, I have a lot of trivial things, but number one, express to the chief our concerns over his mother's surgery, and we hope she does very well. Evidently, an individual has a lot of time because they got on Fulton homepage, and they said they did not find under departments a listing for the animal shelter. And also, they looked for a mission statement, they said they found one for the police department and other entities, but nothing for the City of Fulton. There is a hole in the street. There is a hole in the street at Fifth and Ravine, right by Central Bank. That is told to me that it's nice size, this deep. And where the splash pad is, across from it is that grassy area. And this person was complaining that the electrical department hangs up banners. Could we not put some poles there to where you could hang your own banners up? I don't see that happening, but anyway, I'm just expressing what they had to suggest.
Thank you.
That looks like that's about it. Other than the fact I wanna complain to the article read in newspaper about these tiny houses, I still don't like that I did it all.
Mr. Vaughn?
Last answer not long ago.
Okay, thank you.
I have not one thing, Mayor. You're probably excited.
Gotta put that in record books.
Next.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, very good. We'll now move on to resolutions. First resolution is Resolution 3289, which is a resolution that has to do with the local law enforcement block grant, authorizing the signature on that with the Department of Public Safety. It's for our police department. Councilman Stone, would you please present Resolution 3289?
Mr. Mayor, I present Resolution number 3289. A resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to make application and sign all necessary documents to apply for a local law enforcement block grant from the Missouri Department of Public Safety. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 3289 at this council meeting.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to second to adopt Resolution number 3289. Is any discussion of that motion or of the item? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
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 All those opposed, no. Very good. 3289 stands approved. We'll now move on to ordinances. First reading ordinance is Bill number 1480, which has to do with the authorization of, or reauthorization, I guess we'd say, of our sewer revenue bonds, which we've been growing off for some time. Oh, no, I'm sorry. This is a series of 2015, so, okay. Looks like we're gonna save some money because the state found a way to drop some charges on that, those bonds. So, Councilman Shilin, would you please introduce Bill number 1480 for first reading?
Bill number 1480, an ordinance, amending ordinance 1401-15, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $13 million principal amount of sewer system revenue bonds of State Missouri Loan Program Series 2015 of the City of Fulton, Missouri. I move that Bill 1480 be going to the ordinance night's meeting for a passage at the second, next regular meeting.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion to second to advance Bill number 1480. Is there any questions on that motion? Everyone understand what's going on. Okay, very good. All those in favor of advancing Bill number 1480, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Bill number 1480 advances for second reading at the next meeting. We'll now consider second reading ordinances. Bill number 1478 is a, authorizes a contract between the assessor's office and the City of Fulton. Councilwoman Reclu, would you please present 14 numbers, 1478 by title only, second reading?
Yes, I'd like to also do third reading if it's okay tonight.
Sure.
Okay. Bill number 1478, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk, on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to execute a contract with the assessor and county commissioner of Callaway County, Missouri, relating to the preparation of assessment lists and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill number 1478 for a third reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion to second to advance Bill number 1478 for third reading. Any discussion of that motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of advancing 1478, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. Councilwoman Reclu, would you please present 1478 for third reading?
Yes. Bill number 1478, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk, on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to execute a contract with the assessor and county commissioner of Callaway County, Missouri, relating to the preparation of assessment lists and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill number 1478 for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to second to advance 1478 to final consideration. Any further discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good, thank you. 1478 is now, we've read it three times. It's been presented three times. It's time for final consideration, and I'll ask that you answer roll call by yes or no.
Okay, Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Schibberdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
And Mr. Shilin?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Very good, thank you. Bill number 1478 stands approved. We'll now consider Bill number 1479, which is an ordinance establishing the tax rate for the calendar year 2017 on all real taxable property in the city. Councilman Vaughn, would you please present 1479 by title only, second reading?
Bill number 1479, an ordinance fixing the tax rate and leveling taxes for the calendar year 2017 on all taxable property in the City of Fulton and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill 1479 for third reading at the next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion to second to advance Bill number 1479.
I would like to point out really quickly, we actually do need to get that one approved before September 1st to get it turned over and certified to the county clerk. If we could do third reading tonight.
Yeah.
It's fine with me, but we'll get a motion on the floor and seconded it already, so we, what are we gonna do with that?
Motion to amend?
Well, that, or I'd take a motion withdrawal.
Withdraw.
I'll make a motion.
Withdraw my second.
Thank you. The motion to approve Bill number 1479 has been withdrawn. Councilman Vaughn, would you please present 1479 for second reading again, please?
Bill number 1479, an ordinance fixing the tax rate and levelling taxes for the calendar year 2017 on all taxable property in the City of Fulton, Missouri, and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill 1479 for third reading at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion to second to advance Bill number 1479 for third reading. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. 1479 has been approved in the third reading. Councilman Vaughn, would you please present 1479 by title only?
Bill number 1479, an ordinance fixing the tax rate and levelling taxes for calendar year 2017 on all taxable property in the City of Fulton, Missouri, and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill 1479 for final passage at this council.
Second.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion to second to advance 1479 for final reading. All those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good, thank you. You've heard Bill number 1479 presented three times, and it's now time for final consideration. Please answer yes or no to roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Schibberdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Shilin?
Yes.
And Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Okay, very good, thank you. I believe that does it for ordinances. We'll now move on to announcements. Madam Clerk, you wanna run through those?
Sure. The annual MML conference will be held September 10th through the 13th at Tantera. Give your final reservations or as final as they are at this moment at your stations. We have a note that city council will hold a retreat during the MML conference. That has been changed effective today. We will not hold the charter retreat at the MML conference. It will be held as part of a work session during October. So, disregard that one. The next meeting of the city council will be held Tuesday, September 26th at 6:30 p.m. The annual town and country dinner will be held on Thursday, September 28th at 5:00 p.m. At Showstock Outfitters in Kingdom City. Council members who wish to attend must RSVP with the city clerk by tonight. So, if you do wanna attend, please come see me at the end of the meeting. The Department of Conservation will hold a permit meeting on Thursday, August 31st, 2017 at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers for citizens interested in obtaining a permit to bow hunt on certain property within city limits. For more information, please contact Stephen Kissner, conservation agent at the number listed. The mayor's golf tournament will be held Friday, September 8th at Tanglewood. For more information, contact Parks and Recreation. MoDOT is gonna be holding a public forum on Thursday, September 14th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. regarding the Business 54 overlay and ADA sidewalk improvements project. This forum will be held here in City Hall in the council chambers. And lastly, the City of Fulton was awarded the SCBA Fire Department Grant with federal portion of $182,000, I'm sorry, $182,858. The city's cost share portion of $9,142. The grant and acceptance were approved by the city council in November of 2016. And congratulations to everyone who assisted with that grant.
Wonderful.
One more.
I have a question. When was, what was that date on that MoDOT?
Yeah, September 14th.
Uh, September 14th.
From 4:00 to 6:00.
From 4:00 to 6:00.
What day of the week is that?
A Thursday, I believe.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, we'll be back, okay.
Yeah.
Um, one more. The City of Fulton no longer owns the old Renn property, the old Renn building, the approved auto on the south end of town. We, we got that sold.
What, what building?
Which one, yeah?
Approved, approved auto on the south end, Renn Olds. We did a, we did a lease purchase with them five years ago.
Oh, yeah.
And it taked the tuition, and we closed on it last week.
Good deal.
We could go today, yesterday.
I deserve another hand. Thank you, approved auto.
Good more?
I wanna say, should've said earlier, but I wanna thank all the employees and the staff and y'all doing the clips to talk to people who are out of town, different states that came through our town. And quite a few people are very impressed how well our community does look in the period here. And so, I wanna give kudos to the staff because the golf course looking mowed nice, and Jeremy's doing the ground. So, there are people who looks around, and there's one family that is actually thinking about moving back closer to this area.
Thank you, yes. I think all the staff did an excellent job yesterday. And it was very impressive to see the number of visitors that we had to our community. And I thought it looked very well. Thank you. Okay, let's take an entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion when we adjourn.
Oh.
I don't know what to do.
I didn't get it from Mr. Schibberdecker.
I know, it's Mr. Shilin today.
All those in favor, stand up. There we go.